Six thirty and I see that we have a quorum present, so I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda tonight is approval of our consent agenda. And under the consent agenda, the first item is vouchers totaling sixty seven thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars, thirty-one cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Okay, next item under consent agenda is minutes for our nine twenty, twenty twenty-two meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now into our first public comment section. And I don't think we have anybody online. We do have members of the public in the room. Is there anybody here that would like to address the council before we get started? Anyone? Okay. We'll now move into a, a very significant piece of business, I think, that speaks very well to the health of our city. And the people that serve our citizens. And we have some very significant milestones to celebrate tonight. And we've got six city staff here that, uh, uh, let's see, thirty, fifty, um, fifty-five, so that's a hundred and five, a hundred and thirty years of service is what we're recognizing here tonight. That's pretty significant. And that's in, that's in spite of the silver tsunami that we went through in the last couple of years where we had eight of our staff retire. But I will say as, as mayor for the last almost more than five and a half years that I don't think the citizens of Hillsborough could ask for a better group of people to serve you and, uh, and certainly makes the job of mayor a lot easier, I can tell you. So with that, I want to start the recognition. So Matt, if you're ready to
I am.
Snap away. Our first award, uh, si- service award is Dale Dahlke. Dale has served the city for fifteen years. Congratulations, Dale. There's a little something on the back of there. Yep. Our next award for fifteen years goes to Mr. Ben Steckety. And Ben wears a lot of hats with the city. Uh, in addition to one of the more important ones being this fire chief's hat. He is our building and code enforcement and building inspector. And, uh, you know, those are big jobs too that really kind of go unsung and a lot of people don't see that part of what you do, but when the sirens are going, the lights are flashing and the smoke's rising, everybody knows where you are. Thank you, Ben. Our next, uh, award is for twenty years of service. And this is Mr. Todd Helmer. And it's very fitting, I think, that since we're celebrating Public Power Week, we have a couple of people that really keep the lights on in Hillsborough, Kansas, and you've been certainly one of them for twenty years. Thanks, Todd. And our second, uh, Lights On Award winner for twenty years, Randy Jantsch. Randy, thank you for all you do for the city and seriously, I mean, the lights on is a big thing. We've got a twenty-five-year award winner and, uh, this guy, you know, he's good at biding his time. I mean, you know, and, and, uh, he's, uh, he's, he definitely waited and saving the best for last. So we're glad to have you. Twenty-five years. And finally, it's hard to imagine because aren't you just forty years old, I think? Forty-five, okay. Records say, say something that Joe started when he was about ten years old. Yo Alvarez, come on up, thirty-five years. Wow. Just want to say Mike Rowe has nothing on this guy. Yeah, when it comes down to doing the jobs that some people don't like to do, but, uh, I guarantee you everybody kind of likes to, uh, make sure their toilet's flushed. I know I do. All right. Uh, next item up is Department Head Annual Report and we have Ms. Danielle Bartle, our city clerk.
Everybody.
Thank you, guys.
Of course, I just may use your mouse then to click through.
Let me screenshot up for you. Working there, okay.
So yeah.
There you go.
We can always stop and readjust it for you too. All right, well, um, I've been able to sit through a couple of reports from the other, uh, department heads, so uh, maybe a little benefit on, on my end there to, to get in front of you. But, uh, I just started off by saying, you know, I'm here with you guys. Each time we meet, if you ever have questions, let me know. It, it doesn't have to be in the meeting. It can be anytime. So we'll just go ahead and get started here. We're going to go over a few things, uh, introducing to our staff at City Hall because there has been turnover. Uh, talk about some things that I'm, you know, may, was maybe unaware that the city clerk's office does touch base on customer service, some highlights over the past year and goals in continuing education for myself. Uh, we have four staff members, uh, myself and three of the ladies with a combined experience of six years and two months. So those months count for us, so. There we go. So you can see these are just pulled pictures from our website, myself. On the left, Karen Funk, uh, took over as utility billing clerk and deputy city clerk in twenty twenty-one in April when Mona retired. Mary Johnson is our front desk clerk and court clerk, primary phone answerer. She's the the one that you would visit with when you first come in. And then Brittany Hernandez started with us in June. They had moved from out of town. Uh, she processes accounts payable and payroll and has been a huge asset, um, that I can kind of defer things to her. So all of them, uh, it's a great team. So looking at what, what do we do beyond taking your utility payments? What other things happen here at the office of the city clerk? Um, we answer questions, a lot of questions. Um, they may have absolutely nothing to do with the city. Um, one of my first phone calls was needing the phone number for the service shop up on the hill. So they wanted the phone number for Midway. And, uh, anyway, so we, we get a lot of things, um, maintaining contractor licenses and insurance so that anyone who's doing building permits or plumbing or anything, we know who's licensed in the city, dog tags. We have a list of landlords that frequently is updated. Um, and I'm surprised there's a lot of people who come in requesting that informa- information. And then, of course, as new residents move to town, we have a packet of information we go through with them, telling them not only about the city, their utility bills, but you know, just trying to be really welcoming to them in town. Um, I've, I've split this up so I can, can walk through it a little bit better. One thing that we, we have is there's, there's people who need assistance. And so what we do is provide them with that resource page on the right and, um, if they're having trouble paying their utility bill and we we try to work with them because ultimately the idea is to get paid, you know? Um, we, uh, assist with permit applications, receiving those quite often, planning and zoning inquiries, issuing publications. And then, of course, around rentals with campgrounds, meeting rooms here and then at the scout house. Um, and again, this is by all means not inclusive. It just, as I ran through the list of some of the things, it's, um, there's, there's a lot that goes through our office. Uh, so those are a lot of the external, uh, these are some internal. We have a lot of health insurance inquiries, um, open enrollment happens in June, um, due to the last week of June. So in twenty twenty-one, as you know, we switched from having a primary with Blue Cross Blue Shield to now using FCMI where there's a, uh, primary and secondary. There's been a lot of questions with how that works. Um, going through the first year, uh, it was a lot of navigating for me to understand how it works and be able to explain it. And now that, that we've got a year, we know how it's working. Um, it find it a lot easier to answer those questions. Um, uh, the number, the, the graph on the right want to throw those in there. So I'm just showing how our, uh, employee numbers fluctuate throughout the year. This is just twenty twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. And you can see that increase there in June and July when we have our full employees. The increase in December is often due to our fire department pay is both in June and December of each year. They're only paid twice. Um, see here, a, a friend told me that, you know, when you're in college and you're taking your accounting classes, what they don't tell you is that you're going to be the accountant, you're going to be the IT person, you're going to be the HR person. Um, so I have found that to be true. Um, there's, there's a lot of HR that, that I'm learning. And then as far as the technology uh, transitions, upgrades, hiccups, you know, the server issues we've had, and we're looking forward to, uh, Microsoft three sixty-five. Um, anxious for, for things to happen and to upgrade, but we know that that takes time. And transitioning from where we were a couple of years ago to now, uh, we're using things a lot differently. Also managing insurance claims, whether that's something that happens within the city, um, or, or equipment, um, preparing invoices. So if somebody is getting a, you know, has a specialty service done or our electric departments helping them do something, we would prepare an invoice for them. So there's a lot more of that, uh, than I realized. Uh, down below, you can see that little, uh, the little sheet is a, a, a concrete delivery ticket. So when we decided that we would do all the crush, crush concrete and sell that, then on our side with the office, we needed to figure out a way for the street department to be able to track what they're loading out, who it's going to. And then in turn, we need to invoice that out, uh, which has gone fairly well. We don't have too many outstanding invoices over a period of time. Uh, we also do municipal court, uh, once a month. And tracking purchase orders, getting those department heads to make sure they're getting purchase order to us before they purchase any items and, um, let us know once it's arrived so we can get those paid. Uh, it's been interesting with the supply, the demand, um, and getting things in. Previously, we would always pay once a purchase order was filled. Uh, we're trying to keep track a little bit better because there are times when a department head will order a bulk, I, you know, several items, but it will take a little longer for one to come in than the rest. And so we just try to keep an eye on that. Uh, additional items, uh, we work with the rec commission to process the income and expenses. Uh, of course, filing reports with the state of Kansas and a variety of other entities. Uh, and Karen Funk, our utility billing and deputy city clerk, also is the chair for our safety committee. So she coordinates the safety training. So this is us out at the water plant and everybody's hands on, um, hands on there, safety training. Uh, processing service orders. So if someone moves in, moves out, they want us to double check some data for them. Uh, we, of course, have to work with all of the other departments and make sure that we're getting the information to them that they need. And then in turn, getting that back in a timely manner to us so that we can communicate with the customer. Um, researching and gathering data, just, uh, I've been working with Brittany a little bit in different things. And so hoping to get more things in front of you and to Matt to be able to share with you. So here is our gas and diesel by year from twenty ten to twenty twenty-two, just to kind of see where we've been and where our projected is for twenty twenty-two. So this is just a, just to show that I think that we can provide you more information in different ways than what we have in the past. And so that's where I highlight that research and gather data. Don't put too much stock in the chart as it is, but we'll just, we're working on those sorts of things. As far as customer service goes, um, I would highlight here, uh, the gaining knowledge through experience. We don't have the experience that the ladies had prior. Uh, a lot of that is working to gain experience, gain knowledge through experience, um, finding answers to questions that we haven't been asked before, and then working with vendors to resolve issues. Um, I, as I was going through and looking for some photos, um, I came across this one that's a seventy-six or seventy-eight minute phone call that I had been on, and that is working with vendors to resolve issues. So some of these behind the things scenes that don't affect very many customers or hopefully none still have to be resolved and still take, take time. Um, so, so those are some of the things that, that aren't seen. Um, I'm, uh, wanting to encourage more having good communication, both internally and externally, verbal, written, non-verbal, so that also when somebody comes in, they're getting the same message from Mary as they're getting from Karen, as they're getting from Brittany. So, um, some of that is working for us to gain the knowledge, uh, that we need. Um, and other is just, you know, we're, we're fairly new together as a team and we're, and we're working to develop. Also, customer service wise, if you haven't seen the new website, I'd strongly encourage you to get out there. Karen's put a lot of work into that along with our department heads. And also the online payment platform through Front Desk. Um, that was in June of twenty twenty-one, uh, changed our lives, uh, as they told us it would. And it's, it's had a lot of hiccups, but we're at a good place now. And so, um, if, if any residents are wanting to pay their bills online, we can sure help you get set up to do that. And finally, as far as customer service goes, is supporting our community, whether that's um, purchasing things locally or being involved. You know, my kids love to be involved in the rec activities and, uh, use the library and different things like that. So I think we as an office, uh, want to support our community. All right. Highlights for year one, working with clerks from other communities, um, networking has been a, a big help for, for me to understand that, you know, others are going through this, others are going through the silver tsunami. We're, we're not alone. Um, the front desk, as I mentioned, open enrollment, uh, last year was, was a rough, really honest. It was, it was terrible, but this year was good. So, um, we've made a lot of strides and I'm, and we're finally seeing progress and things smoothing out. Um, we've got some photos of the auction down below. That was a, that was a highlight to, to get that and get through that. Um, our auditors were onsite in June. Um, we, we've received our ARPA funding and ran through the first round of reporting. We've changed the rec, uh, software platform from what was called Sage, uh, similar to Peachtree, if you're familiar with that. Um, two QuickBooks, uh, much more user friendly. Um, Doug's able to get into it and look at it as well. Uh, so, so that was, that was good. Um, we had an intern during that time help us with that switch. And the final item here, record retention and with implementation. Uh, the policy was, was approved for the record retention. So up above, you can see the first round of the shredded truck came, the, that green crate there was full. I mean, it was, it was full. There were things that I've I've consulted with other cities about what we can and what we can't keep. And it was just a lot of going through things. And I needed to be able to understand what we do have, because if we have it, we need to be able to produce it, um, and how long we need to keep those. So now you'll notice that it is back. Um, what we've done is cleaned out a portion of the AMPI to use as storage and there were additional boxes kept there. So now they are in this, back to the, the crate and we have a little bit more record retention to do to just really see what we have there. Um, and, and what needs to be kept or, uh, scanned from that. Continuing education, Lou, Matt, you were there last year. We went to LKM Conference and I won a, a large canvas, uh, canvas painting. So that was pretty exciting. So Blake, I think you'll look forward to it. It's a good time. Um, I've enjoyed the city clerks, the CCM FOA conferences, again, just a lot of knowledge and finding that. You know, it's, it's not a static environment. Things are changing and how we process things are changing. I've been able to connect with people who use the same software that we do or, you know, similar vendors, um, dealing with different issues. And then also the summer virtual ed series is just a, a webinar hour or two, uh, once a month. We've done some cybersecurity awareness as well as a lot of learning how to report for ARPA, uh, which ended up being a little bit smoother than anticipated on the front end. Um, and then continuing to do leadership and management training. I'm just getting into some of that. Matt's given me some direction, which has been helpful. So looking ahead to goals, uh, so this first section here, these are, uh, these have timelines. I would really like to refine our chart of accounts by the end of this year and have that cleaned up for next year. There's a lot of funds that had been set up that are no longer used, like with some of the accounts that we've had. Um, so I thi- I think that that will make my job easier to be able to produce what's needed, um, if if everything that we have in there is something that we will use in the future. Um, I'm looking forward to having the auditors onsite earlier this year. That will help Matt with the budget process significantly. I've talked to them and they, they should be able to be with us in February. So I'm feeling really good about that. Um, and I'd like to be able to attain my CMC status by twenty twenty-four, which is, uh, it requires four years of clerk institute, and so I will be in year two this year. Uh, some of the goals that aren't is, don't have timelines with them, um, just continuing to develop my management style. Um, getting, make, uh, keeping on my timeline with getting reports to you as the city council financials, um, improving our electronic file system within the city, uh, for what we use, uh, to develop a better understanding of the budget process. And, um, I mean, finally establishing those boundaries that make a work home balance. Well, I know I struggle with that. And so that's one of my goals is to just do a little bit better. Again, reach out to me anytime you have questions or want further explanation on anything, uh, because the council or residents. So that is what I have. I am open to questions. I didn't want to, hopefully it didn't take too long, so we're not here late, but, um, yeah, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, great.
I'm sure you'll be fine. No, I, no. As, as you rec, as you saw, we recognized a serious number of, uh, of years of service. And, uh, you know, you're replacing a group of people that had a very similar, if not greater, number of years of service. And I just want to say that I couldn't be more pleased and proud of the job that you and your staff are doing, coming in those six years and two months. I mean, that means a lot. And I know we're going to keep stacking them on, but, uh, you're doing a great job and, uh, just, you know, right person in the right role.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into our business section. And first item up is ordinance thirteen sixty, amending sewer averaging formulas for Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So this is after our last meeting, we had that conversation about what would we do with this. So what this does, uh, thirteen sixty does is change the sewer averaging formula. I have still that screen share. Just gonna drop that down. Uh, it's changed the sewer formula, uh, to from four months to three months. And, uh, those months become the, the bills, the February, March, April bills. So that's the, the usage from mid-December through mid-March. So those are kind of the parameters we talked about. Um, and so what would happen there is the new average we calculated on the May bill uh, and remained in effect until the new average is calculated the following. So that's what that does. Uh, we talked a little bit, um, at the last meeting about changing the winter average to apply to just residential customers. So there is a section in there, section D, that provides, uh, for non-residential customers, they would just be charged directly based on their, their water usage. So they wouldn't be an average thing. Uh, that, we had a little bit of conversation about it, but if that's something you want to take out, you could always strike that out and change that. If that's something you wanted to do. Um, I think with removing that, um, it helps some people and it's gonna not be as great for some other people. It just kind of depends on their usage. Um, people like, for example, institutional people like Tabor or the school district that should help them. Uh, because they're not locked into paying, uh, uh, an average based on, you know, months when they're in school session for the entire year. So it would help them. But if there are other commercial people who have higher usage in, say, the summertime, you know, they would end up paying a little bit more. It's, it, it's hard to tell what that ends up doing unless you specifically broke it down to, uh, individual business. So uh, the financial impact, I don't think that the changing of the residential is going to be too impactful. Uh, the one, one area where we thought we might have some issue is if we run into a situation like we did in twenty twenty-one where we were asking everybody during the winter storm to continue to run their water. Um, what we did with that one, we actually took that month out and did the averaging. And now, now if you just do three months, you really, you don't have a lot of opportunity to take that out. Um, how often does that happen? Not very, uh, but it could be an issue. Um, of course, anytime you do any kind of averaging, there's always somebody who has a complaint about this. The typical one that I hear is that, you know, you're using the usage for December. I had people over for Christmas, the family was in town, there were more showers being taken, blah, blah, blah. Um, I don't know that that really stacks up as a huge change for people, but, um, so that, that's kind of the deal. I don't know that there'll be a huge financial impact with these changes. Uh, I think it'll probably almost be net zero if you look at both those changes, taking the residential. Kind of shrinking that up and changing the months and then switching the commercial over to just being straight water usage. I think will probably end up washing out. I don't know that it'll be too terribly different financially, so that is the, um, that, that's kind of the, the gist of what the ordinance does. Uh, again, if you want to, if you wanted to move forward with just changing the, the averaging thing, you could do so with striking out. Uh, provision D, which is for commercial, switching commercial users. So I'd answer any questions by half about it.
Questions? I would say if, if, um, I, I would just say that the goal of this is to capture water that is going down the sewer, as opposed to water that's going through the storm, storm sewer and the curb and good, you know, running down the street, right? And so, commercial properties, you know, while I'm sure there are some that do water, their, their lawns, you know, the majority of their water usage is probably captured in, in, uh, in their actual.
Yeah, that's probably true. And we do, we do offer irrigation meters too. Uh, so if there is somebody who's doing it just for irrigation, we can separate their meter for their sprinkler system and they don't get a sewer charge. So that's an option too for people.
That's interesting. I, I wasn't aware of that. That's good. Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen sixty, amending the sewer averaging formula as submitted and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'm moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none will pull the council, Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman by.
Yes.
The, uh, ordinance thirteen sixty is hereby approved and, uh, are, and, uh, adopted and the mayor will sign. Next is, uh, an agreement with Barkman Honey and I believe, uh, this councilman Driggers will be, uh, recusing himself at, for, during this time. All right, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, last year, you'll recall, we, uh, did the installation of baffles and aerators in the sewer lagoon. Uh, we had some, uh, pretty lengthy conversations about the impact of Barkman Honey to that. And since that time, we've been working with Barkman Honey to, to come to an agreement on, uh, the portion that we felt was equitable and are most fair for them to pay of that total cost. Uh, forty percent is kind of where we landed on for that project cost, which is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-eight dollars. Um, the per, the agreement that we've negotiated out would allow them to pay that in equal payments over three years. Um, and so, you know, it was set basi- basically based on their historic average. Uh, and so they'll be, uh, paying that over, over the three years with no interest unless they are late on their payments. Um, so the annual payment for them is forty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars, uh, over those three years. Uh, we also, part of the agreement, what the deal is with it is that it, it caps their, kind of their liability. Well, not their liability, but their, their liability for this capital improvement, uh, to this cost. And then allows them to, uh, basically double their production. Before we would seek any additional capital improvements, uh, cooperation with them. Uh, even if such improvements are needed, we're not sure that they will be, uh, but. It doesn't exempt Barkman Honey from any federal laws, uh, any state laws or any of the city's ordinances with regards to the concentration. Type of waste they put in or the volume of that, so. Basically, this is strictly limited to the capital cost. Um, this agreement also dedicates easement for us to do an installation of monitoring station. At this point in time, we don't feel like we need to do that. Feel like we have a pretty good protocol set up to do testing if we need to do so. Um. If there is a need for that testing, uh, does allow, this agreement does allow for that to be. After to capture those costs. Um, that's part of, that's actually an ordinance as well, so. Um. Basically are getting an easement in order to install that should we need it in the future. Uh, so we've we've negotiated with Barkman. They've uh, worked with us on this, have been pretty good citizens, corporate citizens and. I have wanted to to pay their fair share on this and have worked out this agreement. It took took a while, um, but we were able to get to it. Um, and so we're recommending approving the proposed agreement with Barkman. They've already agreed to it, and actually the copy you have is, it's already signed, so. Um, unless there's some things in that agreement that you would like to change, uh, we would recommend uh, moving forward with it.
Any questions? Comments?
City attorney, thank you. It's okay.
Well, actually, I've had to be, I I've been conflicted out of this. City hired a uh, independent counsel to represent.
That's right. I remember. Okay.
Got that conflict, but it is approved by, well, it was written by them, so. They're they're in agreement with it, yes.
Hey, any other comments? Hearing none and accept a motion to uh, uh, approve and adopt the agreement with Barkman Honey and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The agreement is hereby approved and I will sign it. We will get rolling.
Was that, oh yeah, I, it took us a while to get there.
We got there.
We got there.
Was that Brett?
Uh, no, that's another folks.
So um. Next item up is our inter-local agreement with Hillsborough Community Childcare Center, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So this is just a an inter- quick inter-local agreement between us and the uh, childcare center. Uh, it just. Addresses responsibilities related to the uh, community development block grant that will be submitting in February. Um, basically, under the agreement, the the childcare center is responsible for meeting all the financial administration agreement uh, of of the. Grant agreement. There they will be acting as a sub-recipient, so it's it's pretty straightforward. Um, just to give you kind of an update on it, the grant is due February first. Uh, they're working on it right now. Uh, they're trying to raise match of one-to-one, uh, six hundred thousand dollars uh, for the grants. They're currently sitting at, they actually just got another donation today or yesterday for another twenty thousand dollars, so. Uh, they're well, they're over a hundred thousand right now. Uh, the minimum match is twenty-five percent, which is a hundred and fifty thousand, so. Um. They're well on their way to meeting that, and I feel like they're gonna get to that, so. Yeah, we have to have this inter-local agreement in place should we get awarded. Basically says that they will be the sub-recipient and take all the responsibility.
Any questions? Uh, just. Help uh, jog my memory. We, we already took some action on in regards to this already, did we not?
Yeah, we agreed to pay for the uh, grant writing uh, for this grant. Uh, this basically just takes the next step and says, okay, if we get it. You guys will be responsible for the financial pieces of it, so. Just verifying that the city is the pass-through essentially for this.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all.
Yep.
Jogged our memories.
Yep.
Flipped since then. Okay, any, any other comments, questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to uh, approve the inter-local agreement with Hillsborough Community Childcare Center Inc. As submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That agreement is, motion carries, agreement is is approved. Next item is uh, into our discussion agenda. And we have one item tonight, and that is on golf course management, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So we've been working with the Golf Course Association. Of course, the Golf Course Associate, it's a little bit of an odd relationship. The Golf Course Association handles day-to-day operations for the golf course. They pay a portion of every salary. They take in all the fees. Memberships, everything. They pay essentially all the bills out there, so they pay the utilities, they take care of. Hertz, everything else that's related to that. Uh, and. They have up until recently basically paid for the maintenance of all the equipment that they have. They own all their own equipment, so he doesn't own the equipment at the golf course. Really, our only financial contributions to the golf course was for a portion of every salary, run their payroll. That's about it, unless there's a big capital expense. Uh, we did partner with them on the Zoysia fairways, things like that. Uh, but it's becoming. More apparent and and more difficult for the golf association to continue the management arrangement how it is because of. The cost of maintenance, basically, uh, for their. Equipment, it's gonna be a little bit more difficult for them to continue maintaining it. Uh, there's probably a need for more help out there, and I don't know that they're financially in a position to do that. Uh, and the city wants to increase the use of that. I mean, I think we feel that it's a, it's kind of an underused. Resource. We've talked a lot about that at our uh. Folks at uh, our town development. It's a beautiful golf course. It's just we don't necessarily drag people out there who aren't specifically paint playing golf. Uh, so there's a lot of opportunity there, and so we started talking with the golf association. A little bit about, you know, what's what's this look like moving forward and what do we need to do to make sure that we're getting people out there? Are there things we could do better? Um, and so what we're proposing to do starting next year is to take over the daily management of the course and move the Golf Course Association Board into more. An advisory role. Um, so how worth or how I'm kind of thinking about it is. Combining the course management with the sports complex, the pool, museum, the fairgrounds, and the airport, and kind of managing it is one thing. Um, that way we can share some of those resources. Right now. They're kind of separated. Um, until we broke one of the mowers on the golf course, then we have started sharing more actively. Between the sports complex and the golf course. Uh, I just think there's more opportunities to do that. Uh, and I think that if we think about it as one whole complex, it becomes a little bit easier to see the vision and and plan for. Some of the capital improvement stuff that needs to happen too, so. Um, one of the things we'd like to do with, if we were able to move forward with this is to. Look at potentially adding a another position out there that would be focused on kind of groundskeeping, because that's a huge amount of territory we have to. Uh, take on out there. Uh, and that could potentially mean moving away from, well, it would mean moving away from. Contract mowing and taking that and rededicating those resources into a position to help take care of that. Uh, I I would probably put that position, plan would be to put that under uh, the golf course superintendent. Uh, and then, you know, when it's kind of the shoulder seasons in the fall, uh, late fall. Uh, it's, it's just cash and check and it's on an honor system, so. That's not necessarily ideal. Uh, and I know we've turned a lot of people away because they don't, most people don't carry cash anymore. Uh, and don't want to write a check for it. So what we'd be able to do if we were managing them altogether is to run. Rec desk, which manages our recreation programs and our pool or point of sale out there. We could run all of that through. Uh, golf course stuff through rec desk, and that one enables us to do credit cards and. And take payments uh, online. Someone can do it from their smartphone, so. Feel like that would greatly enhance uh, the ability to just, just to take basic payments out there, so. Um, you know, when if we, and if we were able to take in the golf course revenue, they make, you know, about forty-five thousand dollars a year in. Uh, membership fees, and then there's another fifteen to twenty thousand in in greens fees. Uh, I think that we could help offset some of those costs uh, from doing that, so. Uh, we'd also like to take and do some capital improvements. We know there's a lot of things that haven't really been getting done out there just because of cost. Uh, I think with, if we look at it from a a complex perspective and the citywide perspective, we can do some of those things in-house. Uh, to save some money, but we really haven't had that relationship to do that in the past. Um, so we want to repair the car bridge, replace some of the railroad ties. Uh, add some cart path sections or some drainage issues, especially on the eighth green that need to be taken care of. Uh, there's a lot of trees unfortunately that are dying out there that we're gonna need to replace, and so. Uh, working together on that, I think we can put together a five-year plan uh, for the golf course and then also for the rec complex. We've got that kind of, we're working on that. To at the same time, so um, that's kind of one of those things that feel like. We would be better suited to to handling it from a larger perspective than the Golf Course Association. They're they're pretty narrow, so. Um, we would like to keep them on board for uh, to be advisory, because obviously that's kind of the conduit for the members to interact. Um. And so there, there's also a lot of things that they do that. We're not real experienced at right now. Uh, managing tournaments is one of those things, because that usually involves a lot of cash changing hands and. We're kind of allergic to that. Um, we don't like that. So the they would probably have to do some of that, um, and then work out some kind of revenue splitting thing. They also have the Runstrom Scholarship that they do. For golfer, um, that that would be something they'd want to keep together and do. And then we would, you know, sort of transition that, and I think that they're, they're more than willing, I think, to to step into more of an advisory role. This is. I think more of a relief for them, uh, cause it's not. It's not as as tedious and there's not as much stress when we have to, they don't have to deal with the the daily management as much. Um. And then, of course, we're, we are working on a partnership to improve the clubhouse and potentially add a restaurant space in there. Um, and so that's one of the things too that. If we were to get into that relationship with somebody in a, you know, at a restaurant renting that space, then. Having the clubhouse and the golf association involved creates just another party there to to make it a little less. Clear as to what's going on, so. Uh, I think that if if we were able to to make that happen and and move the golf association into more of an advisory role. Uh, then I think we'd be able to move the golf course forward and and really make it a place that. These people wanted to to go into and to improve. Membership and improve utilization. I think those are kind of our, so. Just wanted to throw that as a lot to throw out there, but that's kind of what we've been working on, and I wanted to get your feedback on that, if that's something we should be doing. Thoughts, questions?
My biggest question was, you you addressed a little bit that the. That the association is for it, that the golf association is.
I think so. By and large, I think there. Uh, there was a time, not. Super long ago, when they didn't have a lot of faith that the city would take care of.
Oh.
Of that asset. Um, or that it was even viewed as an asset on some levels. And so. I think they're okay with it now, because we've, we've shown that, you know, we're interested in investing in it. We're not gonna just. Abandon the golf course. It's not something. I don't see how you could.
Cause I guess the biggest thing I'd see is you don't want your membership to drop or feelings of the people that have been members for a while to.
Yeah, well, and there, there's a ton of volunteer hours that happen out there too.
Sure.
And so, we don't want to lose that. We'd be, right, you have a real hard time if they didn't help us aerate greens or.
Even your tournaments and stuff.
Yeah, tournaments, they water trees for us. We've got a volunteer to water trees. We have a volunteer who's uh, picks up the balls on the driving range. They swap a membership out for that service, so it's not really volunteer, it's trade, but. Yeah, you need those people. And they're valuable. They have a valuable opinion on there, because I'm not playing golf everywhere. You're not playing golf. None of our staff except for Avery is out there, okay, so. You know, having that. Feedback is really important.
That's a pretty neat idea with the uh, restaurant. That'd be. Is that just for the golfers or the hotel?
It'd be open to every. So the intentions for that too, we've been working through that.
That's kind of nice, so, yeah, really.
Yeah, it's an underused space. It's time to do something with it.
Yeah. And we think we can do that without causing problems to the golf and the golfers.
I think so. Think we can work through that. There's gonna be some hiccups. Uh, I will not sit here and tell you that this will go a hundred percent smooth. There will be problems.
I think to me, the bigger thing is just that we're thinking through it and trying and and then taking the feedback when it does cause a problem.
Yeah. Yeah, we're more than, I mean, it's, it's, it's membership-based, so they have some ownership.
Right.
And so, we want to make sure we serve that. We want to get more members, because that's one of the issues they've had. At their peak, there were about a hundred and fifty members. Now they're down to ninety-three and the average age has gone up, and so. They're slowly kind of dwindling down.
But what we are seeing though, is our our USD four-ten golf program increasing. Those numbers are increasing. Tabor has reinstituted their golf team, and so those numbers are are getting better every year. And so we're, and then the summer rec programming for the golf. Has gotten, has has stayed consistently big in terms of numbers, so. You know, the the key is to tie it together with the family and then, you know, with adding something like a restaurant, possibly some other. Things, you know, that it's too early to. Get into detail about what what that might be, but there are some other things that would make it. You know, not just, not just a golf place, but an event, possibly even an event. Location, so, you know. It's an asset, and I mean, if you think about it, um, you know, from from the city's perspective. What would it take to replace that asset? You know, if we didn't have it. It's much, it's much cheaper, it's much better for all of us to maintain it and improve it than it is to just let it. Let it die. So, I think it's, it's uh, people that come here, people that do play on it. Do have positive remarks about it. I've, I've heard of myself from people visiting Hillsborough, so. You know, I think we definitely want to keep it, and I think that uh, doing some of these things is gonna really, you know. Take it up, ratchet it up a notch, and then, and I I'm just very excited to see what could happen.
Yeah, some friends from out of town that, a lot of them like golf out there, they really like our golf courses a lot.
Yeah. I got some great compliments about our greens, the our our fairways the other day, excuse me. And uh, so I will tell you that I. Firmly believe that Zoysia Grass decision that the council made was the right one, and uh, it's now. Our courses looks great.
Yeah.
Because of that decision, so commend this uh, group for being supportive at that time, but uh. We'll probably be back to talk to you about more stuff as we go forward, but uh, I think it's, I think it's all positive. Any other comments or questions for? All right, hearing none, we'll uh, let you give your uh, administrators report.
Yeah, thank you. So a lot of, lots of sewer stuff. That's some issues uh, with. Uh, foaming, actually, at the industrial lift station. It's been an issue for a little while, but it's gotten worse, progressively worse recently. Um, so one of the chemicals, we've we've kind of located and did a little detective work and narrowed the chemicals down to one uh, cleaning chemical that Hillsborough Industries uses. Um, it's, you know, once it gets into the system and gets agitated, uh, it foams. Uh, and so what that does with our pumps, they. Uh, they're vacuum pumps, and so when it gets the foam on, then it can't, it can't kick on appropriately. It doesn't shut off on the right time. It it creates a real mess, so. Uh, we've had to rebuild that pump twice now, I think, in the last six or seven months, so. Um, we're working with them and hopefully have a solution shortly. I just wanted to make you aware of it, uh, that it's, it is a situation that that is out there and that we're working on. Uh, KDH, the inflow and infiltration, uh, we've been working to to address the consent decree from KDH on that, so in the. Inflow and infiltration is basically when stormwater or groundwater uh, get into the system. Uh, we have a lot of problems with people who have their uh. Their drain tiles or their their sump pumps connected to the sanitary sewer, which is illegal, but. Wasn't illegal when their house was built, and so you may be doing it, you may not even know it. Um, so we're kind of working through that problem. There's also some sewer lines and kind of narrowed it down to different areas of town. Uh, where we know there's issues there and we probably need to go line those, uh, and then raise manholes up. That helps a lot too, so. Uh, we'll hopefully be considering a re-lining project. I did get a proposal from one of the companies uh, from Oregon late yesterday, but it. It's a little unclear what's in there. Uh, wanna, they want to come in and camera and clean it, and then they're, they'll give you an evaluation as to what actually needs to be lined, so.
But I have to explain the lining.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a process where they take, um. It looks like kind of a giant inflatable balloon and they, they put it in there, it's got a.
Well, you're putting it in this, in the drain, not the sewer, but the. Were you putting it in this, in the drain, not the sewer, but the, what are you putting in the sewer?
You're running the sewer with it and it's um, you usually, usually fill it with your air or water and it fills up and it lines that. And then it's got a hardening, it's got a uh composite material that goes around it. It clings to the sides of the pipe and then it hardens. You either harden it with steam or hot water. And then it basically encases your pipe on the inside of the pipe, so you lose a little bit of diameter, but you actually end up with a, a fully encased pipe. It's really good for uh clay tile lines, which we have those, uh, some of the other types of lines, even different older types, so. Uh, it's pretty commonly used in older systems, it's a lot cheaper than replacing it. Go in there and then you end up going back and boring in new services where people's services work, so.
Haven't we done that here?
Yeah, we've done that. It's not, yeah, we've done it on West Side of Town lot. Um, there's a couple of places on kind of the north side of town by Adam, on Adam Street and up in that area. Uh, that really needed, that's, those were like kind of the high, high-risk areas. Um, and so we're hoping that by doing that and then we're also exploring some ways that other, other cities have done things. To address the issue with sump pumps and drain tiles connected to the sewer lines. We're hoping to have some kind of solution with that too because we know that's a huge problem for us. Uh, any house that was built basically from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-five, there is a chance that it is up there, so. Like, my house maybe one, I don't, I don't think it is because I've got a sump pump going now. There could be some connections there that you don't even know about, um, so we're trying to figure out a way to do that too, so. Uh, we'll be working on that. You'll be definitely seeing some proposals moving forward on that. And that's just so that we can get moving on this consent decree and get it done before uh the end of twenty twenty-three. We have to show a significant improvement or movement toward an improvement, so. Uh, so that's, that's the end of the sewer stuff, I promise. Um, employee recognition programs, I'm gonna be launching a couple new employee recognition programs uh during our Public Power Week Lunch. Which is on Friday, you're all of course invited to join us on that. It's gonna be here, City Hall at noon. Uh, it's being catered in by the pickup line and paid for by K P P Power. Uh, thanks to our friends at K P P Power for doing that, it's part of Public Power Week. Uh, we're hoping to win the traveling trophy that day too, we'll see, I don't know, we've got quite a few points, but we'll see. Uh, but we're launching two new recognition programs. First is the M V P, which stands for Mission Values and Purpose Service Recognition Award. Uh, plan there is for that to go quarterly to someone who's nominated, who demonstrates the value, mission and purpose of the city through their work. Uh, could be, could be a one-time thing, it could be somebody who consistently does things. Uh, the idea is that they're nominated and that uh the department heads will then kind of review those quarterly and make a decision on who, who deserves that award. Who is, who is deserving of that. Uh, and then we're also doing a safety star recognition with a, well, I, I won't spoil it, there's, there's a cool prize with that one too. Uh, now in this quarterly as well, we're gonna offset the quarters, we're not doing them both at the same time, but. Uh, that's for the employee who demonstrates safe work practices, either during specific incidents or again routinely as they do through their day. Um, I am planning on, unless someone has a, a problem with it, uh, giving a half-day vacation to whoever wins that quarterly. And then I'm gonna buy them lunch personally, I'm gonna buy their department lunch, so that's the plan, yeah, I think that's, that's a decent thing to do. Um, so yeah, we're gonna launch those and we're gonna have, uh, the safety committee is the one who votes on the safety star award, so. We've got not every department represented there, a lot of the departments get represented there, so. Joy doing the employee recognition things, we have great employees, we really do, they are, they are what makes this place. And anytime we can stop and say, hey, you're doing a great job, I think we should do that, so. Uh, and then the last thing is Central Kansas Entrepreneurship Center at Tabor College, that's a mouthful, but uh, they're going, we're going by C. C K E C, that's the, that's the shorthand for that. So we got a cool new official logo, which I attached in there, I think it looks pretty nice. Um, they've got their physical workspace, which should be open here fairly shortly. Stacy and I talked about that the other day. Uh, their first programming opportunity is Ice House Program, it's coming, it runs through Network Kansas, um, and there's a program flyer I put in there too. Uh, it's a really cool program. I, I did part of it when I was in Reno County. Uh, it's to teach entrepreneurial mindset, um, they meet five weeks. It's fifty bucks, but you get twenty-five bucks back if you go to four of the sessions and meals are included, so it's actually a pretty good deal, should be told. Uh, we're co-hosting that, um, Hillsborough and Marion are kind of co-hosting it. Marion's got three of the sessions and, and Hillsborough's hosting two. They're both, the bar sessions will be at Tabor uh on those nights, so it's a really cool deal. If you want to sign up, you can contact me here at City Hall, the registration runs through me for Hillsborough. Uh, people in Marion or another half of the, the county, they, they've got another flyer for them. And I think Emily Canaday at Tampa State Bank is the contact for that, so. Yeah, it's an awesome program, I'd highly encourage anybody who's interested in entrepreneurship, even has like a, a crazy idea for business. This really goes through what it takes to be an entrepreneur and kind of what that dedication potion is, so. Uh, it's great class, Melinda Rangle, uh, who's professor over here at Tabor's, gonna be the instructor, so, so. It's a cool deal, really highly encourage everybody to come check it out and also go out and find the C K E C Facebook page like that, check it out. We've got some cool stuff coming out on that too, so that's everything I had, sir.
Any questions? All right, um, we're next up is our final public comment section and I see we do have a couple members of the public here. Hi.
Joy Mark, my son Vinny.
Hi, Vinny, welcome.
Personally, we are um trying to reduce his screen time.
And I, and I, and I was like, didn't really want to go, and also.
And trying not just to take the way that the, with some things, I know he's a little young, but uh. Learning how to, how the, that community works together.
That's great.
We're glad you're here.
We, we were interested, that we are the um, North Neighbors of one-fourteen. Interested in the report last week.
I mean, so we came here, but.
So. But he, he recognized the sewer issues too.
Oh, good.
I had him read the article. Thank you for letting us whisper over here, as I explain things.
Not a problem, we're glad you're here, I hope we didn't bore you.
I told him that he wouldn't get bored, he needs to bring a.
Well, what is, what do you read, tell us a bunch of us?
That's classic.
Nice.
It's about, uh, it's about a girl in middle school in here. And, and she is a half spy, half normal kid, as you find around a, a basic neighborhood.
Very good. Well, you're welcome to keep coming, we love to have you, we, we meet two times a month, the first and second Tuesday of every month. And sometimes we have special meetings, but you can always count on the first and third Tuesdays at six-thirty, okay? All right. Is there any other public comment? I don't see any other members of the public online. So we will now move to uh council comments, Councilman By.
Uh, the only thing I have is uh, I want to give a shout out to Hillsborough Community Hospital. Um, last Monday I went in, uh, got dehydrated at work and from the moment I walked in there to the moment I walked out, they took care of me. Very loving, very caring, um, so Hillsborough Community, Community Hospital, thank you for taking care of me and putting up with me, so.
Very good, Councilman McCarty.
I was there twice, I like.
I, I'm choosing not to participate. I had no other comments.
All right, is there any other business that needs to come in for the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.